We're on.
Okay, I'll call the, you all settled there?
Yeah.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. If you all had a chance to read the minutes. And if so, uh... I'll entertain a motion for acceptance. Whenever you're ready.
Excuse us. Last meeting board question of the week. Can you remember if you're in this one?
On the second page of the minutes. I think it'd be helpful if we included here part of that discussion that Robert brought up and then Tom, and I think maybe, maybe elaborate on as well concerning Mr. Hurley's proposal that the second aspect he came to us about the variance. He has correctly pointed out that it wasn't the variance that would be, probably wouldn't, we wouldn't, I don't remember his words exactly, but I just wanted to include that comment about the variance where Mr. Hurley ought not to bring that up with us, instead do, and bring my notes with me that I wrote down last time. Instead of a variance, he ought to seek a... Special permit instead. I'm wondering in this paragraph if that's where something to that statement ought to be included.
The second page?
Right. That ways, you know, if we had to have a reference back, having the variance and special permit be the, utilizing special permit be the more appropriate thing.
I, you know, I think...
Just to have that statement there to cut, you know, to show that we did talk about that, suggested.
Well, I think, I think that we have the ability to make that judgment almost at any part in the process up until a point in time we actually decide.
Right.
So I think we can, you know, if, I think your, I mean, your point is, is well taken in that we did discuss the, the need for the variance.
Right.
And I think our...
I realize we have coming up shortly here anyways.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it'll be a matter, but I think we have the discretion as a board.
Okay.
To determine whether we brought it up or not, that it doesn't require variance, even if it had not been discussed.
But, yeah, my point is, should that be included in...
I don't think it makes sense.
Okay.
I think we're safe.
Okay.
Well, but along that line, the sentence says, "But the planning board is the permitting authority for signage, leaving the impression that this board will not take up that issue." So, i-if this board's gonna consider signage, then you gotta correct that sentence so that it doesn't leave the impression that, that it's only the planning board that has to deal with it.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna be dealing with it.
No, they do that anyway. That, that's what I'm saying is, you, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, "It's on the planning board, but we'll deal with it later." It's one or the other.
No, I, I contend with...
I think...
In the sign...
I think, he was talking to them that night, uh...
At the site visit?
At the site visit about the sign.
Right.
Him talking to the planning board about it.
Right.
So that's, that's not an issue.
So, Lee.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I don't wanna touch it if we don't have to. And he's not asking us too early.
You looking for motions? Yep. Lisa, move to accept the minutes.
Okay.
That's perfect.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve your minute, and it has been accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion there. Okay. Okay. Ten minutes, five minutes before, uh... I got to do one, and then I've gotta show up tonight. I don't think he's either, I don't know.
Yeah.
Either that, or he's gonna be flying into the next couple of minutes.
Any issues come up?
No. No, but after the site visit, I'm able to tell you about the site visit when we were there, but after the site visit, there were even fewer issues. So, they had, they had some approvals in hand that they didn't have when they were here regarding the entrance and exit ramps that they wanna put in. And then, I believe...
Lisa, what's the time you know where it is? Tell us.
Seven thirty, yeah.
I think they did last week. They were gonna try to do it the second, but then they pushed it back.
Oh, 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 seven thirty-five, but I told her...
I think that went through.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because they were, they were feeling...
You know, timing. Sometimes it's...
And you won't even see the building, see the roof for the most part.
Yeah. Yeah, I drive a school van, and I don't finish up till six-thirty at night, but I saw you guys out there.
Oh, did you come by?
Yeah, I came by about five, five-thirty.
Yeah, that's where we were there.
Close to the five, actually.
Yeah. Do we have any more staples money? Credits or anything of that nature?
Uh, no, no credits, but we have money.
Oh, okay. I'd like to get a draft stamp. It says draft. I got copy, I got all kinds of stuff, but not draft. Make this one up there. I don't give a no. No? Okay. Unique for us to be ahead of the eight ball.
Unique?
Unique for us to be ahead of the eight ball. Waiting for the clock to catch up to us.
Okay, it's going past seven. This continuation of Artistic Landscape, number fourteen dash oh-one. We had a site visit, oh, okay, months ago.
Nine twenty-six.
Nine twenty-six. And one of the things that we were concerned about was the parking and where it was gonna be, and, uh, Tom and I unfortunately were the only ones that showed up for that site visit, but from what we could see, that, uh... I don't see why they have to conform to the seventy-five foot setback for the parking area, because it's gonna be actually below the road, and, uh, and it's going to, if he has to go seventy-five feet, he's not gonna be able to get the trucks that come in there to be able to turn around. So I think, I don't have any issue with, what was it coming in?
Into the setback, yeah.
Into the setback.
Right.
That's what the setback is gonna be.
They're, no, the setback's gonna be about twenty-five feet, maybe thirty feet. But they're, they're substantially down, it must be down ten feet, twelve feet, so you know, you probably won't even see cars parked.
Do you have, do you have the map for artistic?
It's fine.
That's fine, yeah, we just need a plan. I have it too.
That?
Yeah.
I'm gonna show you. This is the entrance right now.
Yeah.
That, that is, and the house is right, is right here. Okay, and he's gonna make an exit down here, and he's already got a per, uh...
Permit.
Permit from the state to do that. So there's plenty of distance here, but his parking is gonna be here, and you can see that he's back here. But if, we had to have him go seventy-five feet back, he'd be back in here.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And the topography of the lot is such that if it's a gnoll, where this building is, it's gonna level that hole and fill in, and, uh, recover the lots. And this area here is gonna be ten feet below the road.
Hmm, it sure is. Well, up, up human houses, and quite a pier and all this.
Right.
It's a...
And he's gonna, he's gonna build this up so that it doesn't have such a steep...
Yeah.
So for what we, what we saw, uh, and who's, was asking, uh...
There, there, he's brought, if I can, if I can jump in, he's brought three issues before the board. One is the location of the six parking spaces in front that are within the front setback. The second issue is the presence of the five storage, open storage bins that are going to be in the rear corner of the lot, and the issue there is that they're, they go within the setback, they go right up to the property line, which is a property line, which is a pack. The golf club owns, there's a road that borders the back of that lot, and that road is actually owned evidently by the golf club, by the Ipswich Golf Club, and apparently he went to them and spoke to them about it, and they said, "Look, we never really use it, it's just an access we have to our property. We don't care, it's fine if you do that."
And, and they're movable?
Yeah, he can, he can shift.
Or, or are they gonna be, were they, were they gonna be movable bins, or were they gonna be, you know, like, uh...
Or those blocks like you have.
Yeah, I think there's more than a block of things.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, 'cause it's just, it's just for fill and stone and, and mulch.
They're not gonna have, they're not gonna have like fertilizer stored on there, 'cause that's...
No.
No, no, no. No. His, his business is, uh, is, is designed and, and built, uh, and he doesn't sell to retail.
Yeah, there won't be any retail.
Yeah, he, uh, is leaving it all gravel and whatnot so that he can plant, uh, have plants, uh, in the ground that he's gonna, going to move to another site.
Well, as a component of, of the application, the third, the third request actually relates to the fact that he'll be paving what is slightly more than fifteen percent of the lot area with hard pack, and consequently, though he will be putting stone virtually as much as he can, he's gonna use that for the entrances and the exits and the driveway.
And the visit base.
Yeah, so the, so the third element is, is that he's exceeding the fifteen percent that's allowed under the bylaw for impervious services. You know, my only, my only thought on that is that, uh, I, and the large, the lot is large, really, it's surprising how deep and big it is and how low and far away it is, and he's actually, you know, putting, you know, it's fifteen percent is not a huge amount of, of the lot, but it does slightly exceed it, but I don't see why it can't be allowed, but I would want to, I think we should, you know, maintain some sort of restriction instead of giving him open-ended over fifteen percent cap at some point, so that he has to comes back, so that if he does in two years say, "Jeez, I'm gonna pay you back 'cause I'm getting too much runoff, I get more water than I thought I was gonna get," that he's forced to come back and ask us about it, so that he can give, I prepare to give him a little bit of room. And, and part of, part of the placement, part of the placement of the parking spots as opposed to being the rear of the property, as he pointed out to us, was because the fire department doesn't want vehicles back there, 'cause there's, the building goes back almost to leaving a width of, of a fire truck to go back there, so he doesn't want any vehicles back there in the case the fire department wants to get back. So they, they moved those parking spaces up there front, 'cause the only place they could put them. So that, so despite, despite, and it's a really odd shaped lot, because right up, right up near the entrance point, you know, I mean, you know, it's, yeah, it's a tiny, tiny little triangle, it's not, it's barely bigger than this room up in the corner, I'm sure you guys know. But my hat's off to him, it's gonna be a major improvement to that site, it's gonna bring that, it's gonna increase the assessment of the property, bring some tax stuffs to the town, and, and the guy's putting, you know, a major investment in here for playing plans. So I, I...
Which, which plan shows where he wants to put the drive, the parking? That's what I...
It's, it's, it's the map.
Does he have it on his, is it designated on, on his or not?
Yeah, I think about one part where it's noted. The entrance is going to be where the current entrance is, where it's being lit.
Right, well, it's gonna have two entrances, right? I mean, on entrance or exit?
It's on, it's on number three of nine, Bob. See the bottom right-hand corner of the maps? If you look at number three of nine, is the one that I have, those proposed conditions, that's where you see the two entrances. And he told us that actually the state only requires a fifty-foot space between the two, but he's, they've actually moved it out to a hundred feet, so it's even broader, because that is a...
You got a letter from the state?
Yeah, he said that, when we were there, he didn't have it when he was here, but when he was there, he said, "I, I came from a meeting, and they said, 'That's fine, I can work, we'll work with you, no problem at all.'" So he's, he was either gonna receive that letter that day or later that, later the next day. Now, he's since gone before the planning board, so I'm assuming that letter exists, although we haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Do you see it, Bob?
Uh, well, yeah, I, but where's the parking?
If you look to the right of the, of the entrance, there are previous papers.
Okay, come up, right, right there. That's the parking, right to, to your left, to your left, right there, right there, that's the parking.
The paved, the big, period.
They just...
Yeah.
That, that's the parking they were just talking about.
So it's got six there and then four adjacent to it.
Yeah. Which four, that and six there.
And it's the nose, it's the front noses basically of those six spaces that encroach into that front setback.
To the fifty-foot setback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the, you know, you, you could, you could park five cars, you know, six cars there for the next ten years, nobody would know you're there. There, there, the, the rise from the property to the road line to there.
On the plan, he's got fifty-foot setback, and then he's got seventy...
The seventy-foot, yeah.
But you can see what it would do if...
He has no place to go.
Right. So, uh, after seeing the site and talking with Tom, did you come up with a possible sole decision on this?
Uh, on the basis of our conversation, based on our last meeting, in an effort to think about helping the applicant, 'cause he did state his timeline would be to try to get a structure and foundation up before snowfall. We indicated what the normal process would be, is that we would review, we would view the material in its entirety tonight, pending, pending the site visit, and make a decision at that point, and then normally, as you know, a decision would be, if it's affirmative decision or denial, it's drafted and then, and signed at the next. Well, that, that pushed him further to November, and, uh, so I took the liberty of drafting either decision, depending upon the board's actions. So we do, we do have a draft decision of an affirmative and a denial, and a denial in the event that the board wants to take an action, and we can review either depending upon our decision, and then have it ready really sooner for him, because he's still subject to the twenty-day, he's still subject to a twenty-day appeal.
Appeal, yeah.
So, no matter what he does, and we told him that, but as in the prior hearing, there were, there were no abutters or other community members present who spoke in opposition to the plan, and that's again the case tonight. So, um, so yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a draft of a decision that could be used if, if the voter wants to do that.
Okay. That is the board's, uh... You wanna hear what he's written, or do you wanna discuss this further? Here, if nobody wants to discuss it further, go ahead, Tom.
I'll also speak to me.
I'll pass it around so they can all read along.
Want me to read it?
Yeah, why don't you read it, see, you, you go there, why don't you read it?
Sure, okay. Case fourteen dash oh-one, decision of the Rural Zoning Court of Appeals under the Protective Zoning Bylaw, petition of Anthony Hurley slash Artistic Landscapes LLC of Georgetown, Mass. dated eight twenty-six to thirteen for a special permit and or variance on a property located at one eleven Newburyport Turnpike so as to permit the construction of a single-story commercial building thereon in place of a single-family residential... of a single-story commercial building thereon in place of the single-family residential structure currently located on the site. A public hearing was held at the Raleigh Town Hall Annex on September nineteenth to thirteen. Members acting on this case are Donald W. Thurston, chairman, Nathaniel Dummer, member, Phil Cressy, member, Robert Cruel, there's a spelling error there, Cruel, member, and Thomas Hygird, clerk. Pursuant to a public notice originally in the town common, a newspaper in general circulation in the town of Raleigh, published on fifth of September two thousand thirteen and on the twelfth of September two thousand thirteen, and by mail sent postage prepaid to all parties in interest as defined in Massachusetts General Law in Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, such list of parties having been certified by the town assessor, and to the town clerk, the planning board, the Raleigh Board of Selectmen, and the building inspector, and being posted in conspicuous place in the Raleigh Town Hall for not less than fourteen days. The land is located in the Business Light Industrial District and is shown on Assessor's map fourteen, Lot Seventeenth, the deed is recorded in the SIC Registry of Deeds at Book three-one-nine-two-one, page oh-two-five. The applicant has requested a special permit to construct storage bins which require relief under sections four-point-seven-point-two-dash-F, which states with regard to the Business Light Industrial District, quote, offices for general construction landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, with open storage structures, et cetera, et cetera, may not be located within seventy feet of a street line or within the minimum setback area established under six-point-one-point-three-point-two-point-two, and also under four-point-one, four-point-eleven-point-three-point-two-dash-C, which requires a special permit for any use that will render impervious fifteen percent or twenty-five-hundred square feet of any lot. The applicant has also requested a variance under section six-point-one-point-three-point-two-point-four for relief from said section, which states parking spaces in no event will be allowed within fifty feet of the street line. The board will consider the request as proposed and take such action on each as it deems appropriate. These requests are made as part of the applicant's desire to locate a new sixty-five-hundred-square-foot commercial building on the site to house the applicant's landscaping business. Chairman opened the public hearing in due form and determined that there was no conflict of interest by him or any other member. Page two. Preliminary case material. At the public hearing on the nineteenth of September two thousand thirteen at approximately seven-twenty P M., the applicant's engineer, designer, William Holt, was present at the hearing in addition to Mr. Hurley. No abutter, resident, or other interested party of the public attended the public hearing. Certified abutters list was reviewed and accepted. The applicant also submitted a copy of a properly completed permit license clearance form. Additionally, he submitted a copy of his request for a site plan review from the Raleigh Planning Board dated seven, eight, two thousand thirteen, the supporting documents. The file also included the initial zone and compliance determination denial from the Raleigh Building Inspector directing the applicant to seek relief from the CVA. The board was provided with a complete set of plans depicting the building, the site, and the proposed locations of new entrances and exits. Mr. Holt gave a brief history of the site and discussed the applicant's plans to build a new building whose gross size was to be sixty-five-hundred square feet, of which forty-five-hundred square feet would serve as warehouse space and the remaining two thousand would be office space. To complete this process, they would be raising the existing two-story structure currently located on the site for which they had already received the proper approvals. Mr. Holt noted that the applicant was, uh, waiting for final approval from Mass Highway Department to expand the current entrance and add a second curb cut allowing for exit from the property to facilitate safe and easy access in and out of the location. He noted that existing electric and water services on the site will be used. He also pointed out the location of parking spaces on the front portion of the lot which served as the basis for the relief required under section six-point-one-point-three-point-two-point-four of the bylaw. When inquired by Chairman Thurston about the need for locating the parking spaces were noted, Mr. Holt noted that the fire department had required the location due to its need to be able to access the rear of the building in an emergency. Gravel and pavement will be used in combination on the site, however, the paved area as shown on the plan will exceed the fifty percent ratio limited by the bylaw under four-point-eleven-point-three-point-two, hence the request for relief. The applicant noted after questioning that the site will not be used as a retail location, only commercial deliveries occurring perhaps once weekly or in some instances once monthly will be occurring in site. Initial employee count is number three, including the owner. Most deliveries go directly to the applicant's customer's location. The building will be used to store landscaping supplies, irrigation supplies, lighting fixtures, and other tools and related items. Mr. Hurley indicated further that he was continuing to work with the Mass Highway Department to iron out access issues and agreed to double the state's request of fifty feet between the driveways. The board concluded that upon approval by Mass Highway, access concerns would be mitigated. Page three. The board explored the applicant's timeframe for construction, and Mr. Hurley noted a preliminary schedule which would have a foundation and shellup before the first snowfall. Chairman read letters received by the board from the Fire Department, Health Department, Selectmen's Office, and the Conservation Commission, none of which found issue with the application as submitted. Said letters remain a part of the file and may be viewed in the CVA office. The applicant stated that a joint planning board, CVA, site walkthrough visit had been planned for September twenty-sixth at five P M., at which time he would be showing the board, typo, the precise locations of the building, parking spaces, proposed entrances and exits, and going over site elevations and traffic routes in and out of the site. Based on the board's review of the material presented, there did not appear to be any outstanding issues which would prevent the board from approving the applicant's request, subject to any conditions or reclassification of said request as deemed appropriate by the board. In order to accommodate the board's desire to fully review all elements of the site, the hearing was continued to October seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, subject to the site visit before then. The hearing was reopened on August seventeenth at approximately seven-fifteen P M. As in the nine nineteen hearing, no abutter, resident, or other member of the public attended the hearing. Mr. Hygird and Chairman Thurston attended and reported to the board their conclusions from the scheduled site visit on nine twenty-six thirteen with various planning board representatives, the applicant and his designer, and Larry Graham and Graham Associates Engineering Advisor to the planning board. A full walk around of the site had transpired, where ground sticks marking the new building's location were noted by the applicant, as well as access egress changes to the site, topographical impacts, proposed areas for storage of landscaping materials in the rear of the lot, and general sightlines from the street, site to the building, were viewed and discussed. All present found no component of the plan unacceptable, and Mr. Hurley indicated that he had just received complete approval from Mass Highway to build the driveways as proposed. The board reviewed the relief requested by the applicant under each section of the bylaw and concluded that it will be not necessary to issue a variance as requested for the parking spaces under six-point-one-point-three-point-two-point-four-B, and that each request, as originally stated, can be met with the issue and so a special permit. After further discussion, the board concluded it was prepared to take a vote to approve the application as submitted and to include proper conditions as necessary. Page four. Based on the above, the board voted to issue a special permit and sign to an, uh, an affirmative decision approving the applicant's request to build a commercial building, as noted, at one eleven Newbury Turnpike, including the parking spaces noted, paved areas indicated, and storage bins located to the rear of the property. Board findings. Therefore, after concluding its review of the application, the board found that the construction of a commercial building in conformance with the certified plot plan submitted to the board by the applicant prepared by William G. Holt, uh, PLS RSE dated August nineteenth to thirteen, and identified as job number oh-one-two-dash-oh-three-one-dash-oh-three-dash-SP, will not be any more detrimental to the district or the community in which it resides, hereby grants a special permit as follows, allowing for the state relief from Raleigh zoning bylaws noted below. One, to construct five, five open storage bins along the rear right corner within the standard fifteen-foot setback and grant applicant relief from section four-point-seven-point-two-dash-F, which states with regard to the Business Light Industrial District, offices for general construction landscaping with open storage structures may not be located within seventy feet of a street line or within the minimum setback area established under six-point-one-point-three-point-two-point-two, and two, for relief from four-point-eleven-point-three-point-two-dash-C, to develop the property for parking and other access and utilize as proposed impervious material for surface coverage which is greater than fifteen percent or twenty-five-hundred square feet of said lot, but not to exceed twenty percent or three thousand square feet without the board's further approval. And three, to grant the applicant the requested relief from section six-point-one-point-three-point-two-point-four, which states, quote, parking spaces in no event will be allowed within fifty feet of the street line, quote, and allow him to construct six spaces as requested and shown on the above cited plot plan, which fall within the standard. The board will consider the request as proposed and take such action as each as it deems appropriate. The above finding is made subject to the following conditions. A final plan showing the location and construction of the building must be approved by the building inspector. The applicant shall obtain and submit to the zoning board of appeals a letter from the inspector as proof of the final plan's approval. Two, any changes to the plan supplied with the application must be brought before the zoning board of appeals for review and approval prior to filing of the plan at the registry of deeds. Three, a final approved copy of the plan must be submitted to the fire department to determine if all any additional proposed alarms are to code. Any subsequent change to the plan must be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for approval. Page five. Failure to comply with the provisions of this decision at any time shall be reasonable grounds for the building inspector to order operation of wall construction at this location to cease. Voted the seventeenth day of October two thousand thirteen. Raleigh Zoning Board of Appeals members, Chairman Don Thurston, Thomas Hygird, Nathaniel Dummer, Phil Cressy, Mark Cruel. And page six, the standard appeal notice. So, uh.
That was quick to me.
There are a couple typos I discovered.
Yeah, a couple, a couple mistakes here. First, first one was, uh, cruel, that's cruel.
Okay, and above that, uh, the last three. My Nathaniel is I E, not I A, no. But on the, on the signature block at the end, you've got it I E L, so there's just one.
Just one spot.
Just one there.
I think on page four, section three, middle of the page. Uh, the paragraph reads to grant the applicant the requested relief from section, et cetera, et cetera. The third line goes, and allow him to construct spaces as requested and shown on the above cited plan, which fall within the standard. Sentence doesn't finish, and then it begins another sentence. I think what needs to be done there is it should said within the standard setback period, and the remaining sentence is superfluous, doesn't need to be there, should be taken out.
Where does that come down from?
Yeah. Three, page four.
Page four.
I think three.
With the standard setback.
Standard setback period, yeah, which is a standard, it's not clear, I think. Now, Bob, you brought up an interesting point, uh, Dean rather, you brought up an interesting point, uh, which I didn't consider, and that's as a condition, in the storage bins, we don't define what can or cannot be in those storage bins, you know? Do we feel a need to actually say what can be in them? We've had that kind of issue in the past.
That should be a condition that all known fertilizer be, uh.
Right, are there any materials, young fertilizer that we would not want in there? I think it's an interesting point.
Yeah, because at the meeting last month, he said he normally would not have any fertilizer there, but he has a permit or something where he could store some inside the building.
Yeah, he can probably store bad fertilizer, I'm assuming, inside.
So maybe we ought to state something about brown side.
Well, that's, I, I wonder, because remember at Midway, part of the issue was the storage debris also.
Flying around, blowing around.
It was all kinds of, all kinds of stuff that, that the site created.
You might wanna ask, actually, what is it gonna be constructed of? We're saying blocks, but, you know, are they gonna have blocks?
I don't know.
You know, is that matter what is constructed of, or will the plan what take care of that? How is constructed the bins?
Probably, I'm guessing probably how it's constructed is the planning board. What do you think?
Would you have covers over it because of?
Well, actually, the, uh, what he's, what he's asking for is us to, uh, relieve of where they're located.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, and that's what we're dealing with, is where they're located, not, uh, that's up, up to the planning board to.
To restrict that?
To restrict anything, I would say.
But that's fine, because when we did Midway, we did restrict him to certain debris and certain types of material, you know, stone and.
Troubled before with, you know, high, high wa, on the rains heavily.
Right.
Runoffs going on to the street, we wouldn't have that there, but.
No. Well, I just wonder if, probably the only issue is whether or not, you know, like you say.
Chemicals.
It's chemical, if there's some chemical that you might store and fertilize would be the only thing I could think of.
It was all wetland and back there.
Yeah, 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 I mean, but I don't, I don't know if we need to go there.
Well, they should be in the lab, I think.
I, I probably, if I were them, I would wanna touch it, touch upon it. Now, they, he did have, I believe he did have his final meeting in front of the planning board last week, and I believe he obtained approvals, I don't know that for a fact. We were, we were trying to obtain minutes, but they were not, they were not available yet, and I did not have a conversation with, with Kurt or Cliff in that regard, so I don't know. But I'm assuming they approved it as a, or with whatever other conditions they made with post on it, but technically, we are just, I think, trying to address just the issues you spoke about here.
Right. Is there any, any additions, corrections that, uh, need to make?
Did you get these spelled here, please?
Bob, are you comfortable with what he's written?
Uh, yes. I, I was just gonna say, with regard to the last question, if you're concerned about, and, and I guess you've gone past it, but if, if, if anyone were concerned about what is gonna be in the storage bins, you could say restricted to what he's put in his application, which is bark, mulch, sand, and stone, and then say if he wants anything additional. Because he did say bark, mulch, sand, and stone.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Then when he says similar materials, that's.
That's good.
That's a bad thing.
But, um, aside from that, um, no, I mean, the, the fact that the, the variance isn't necessary for the parking is great.
Yeah.
Saves us having to answer those four questions.
No, that's right. In the affirmative. Wouldn't.
So?
I'm okay with it.
You, you okay with it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah? Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, for the true vote. Um, the motion to approve the decision as written with corrections. Some mood? Wait a second.
Second.
The motion, wait a second. All those in favor? Same time by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Okay.
All right. We can sign the last page, but there's no correction on the last page.
Yes. Then I can get the, the copy so that she can edit the plan, uh, the limitations that we made.
You got it on disk? You got it on disk?
Yeah.
So keep doing it.
Yeah, I'll have to send it to her, or I can give it to her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
For better or worse, everything's on disk.
Hmm?
For better or worse, everything's on disk.
Okay. Shall I sign one of the, sign this one and?
You can, it, it, what paper do we use? Do you use yellow paper, use different paper?
Yellow paper?
What kind of paper do you use after page one, after the, after the?
Oh, regular white paper.
Just regular white?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, then it will not appear different. You would not want it to look like someone inserted a document after that.
And don't forget the form where it's just Robert's name that's on here. And you fill in all the other information prior to it as well, such as mortgages, car loans.
All right, so at least you can get that filed on. Okay?
This'll work. Good. You want me to use that one?
I don't care.
Okay.
I, I make note that the plans are attached.
Probably this one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is it circled?
My copy of that.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
You weren't having email address, are you there though?
That one? Hold on.
I didn't have it, would you?
You know, I can check.
I was gonna say you could have my, what the, you know, if it'll be available.
I'm sure there's.
Oh, boy, yeah.
I'm gonna take a five minute recess before we take the next case.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Bye-bye. You coming back?
Yes. I'll be back.
Tonight?
So we're doing a recess.
Okay, next, uh, item on the agenda tonight is Thompson's disjudged trust Marion Way. Forty B. And Sean has, uh, sent us, uh, if you don't have enough copies, I, I made extra copies for you.
I think we're good. Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, the guys gave me an update when I retired. From, from the guys in the office. It's, it's great, but it's.
Okay.
The lock. That, that's, it's just good.
Yeah, both sides. Each, each one's, I think each one's set differently as long as I can remember. And I never use them anyway. We want.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into an argument about this, but, uh, regarding the playground, I was not advocating a playground. All I was doing was trying to point out that these kids are gonna have to play in the street, which is a safety hazard. That's all I was pointing out.
Well, I, may, Mr. Timmer, can I respond to that?
Would you?
At Emily Lane, now, my, my daughter lives on Emily Lane, there are a slew of kids, and they all play in the backyards, they don't play on the streets. And the backyards of Emily Lane are considerably smaller than the backyards of the proposed Marion Way.
Are they really, Tim?
The front yards are huge, though. Where on, on, on Emily Lane?
Yeah.
How big are those lots?
They're acre lots.
They're acre lots, right?
They're, they're acre lot plus, what are they, sixty thousand, forty thousand?
Forty, uh, I think they're forty-three.
Forty-three?
Mostly.
Okay, and you're putting two families on twenty?
Right. But I'd like to say, you know, again, that the backyards.
But that, that's.
You know, considerably large.
In my opinion, it doesn't, that, it doesn't even. You've got forty thousand square feet for a single family home. For one family. It may have three kids. All right? And you're putting a duplex, which is gonna be two families with three kids, that's six kids on twenty thousand square feet. That's.
A big difference.
That's a big.
It is a big difference.
It's a big difference.
I, I agree.
I don't care whether the backyard is bigger or smaller. The area that they have in which to play is a lot smaller. That's, that's all I was. Okay, uh, anyways.
Do you wanna read these into the record?
I think we'll read the trust. That we can put, we can put all this.
This letter.
Okay. As it stands. Will we agree with it or not? Do you have anything else you wish to give us tonight?
No, that's it.
We still haven't received, as you said, we haven't, we haven't received, uh, who owns the property?
It, it's in this packet, uh.
It's in here?
It's in here.
Where?
It's in, it's on the last pages.
Well, I'm, sure, it's, it's the trust that, trust.
Right.
But you haven't shown us the deed to the property, proving that they own it.
The deed to the property was given in the very first submission on May twentieth, two thousand ten.
As I recall, at that time, the board was asking you for it, and you said you would get it.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, it, it, it's in this packet right here, here it is.
Can we see it?
Sure.
The copy of the deed.
There's three deeds involved. And that was submitted with the original packet.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to make copies and give them to the board.
I think they are. Additionally, though, we have been unable to identify or locate, um, uh, any of the, at the last meeting, we spoke about architectural drawings. I've got.
And that's in the first packet.
Yeah, we looked at it, I couldn't, I, you know, there's lots of detail in that first plan, but then you changed and gave us a new land plan, and I, you know, because that's two ten. We got a new land plan.
But the, but the buildings are not changed.
Maybe not, but I don't remember seeing, uh, but you, you believe they're in that packet right there?
Yes, yeah.
All right, I wanna take a look at it, too.
That's, uh, I need that copy back, but I need another copy. But I'd be glad to make another copy for the board.
If that's in our original copy, then that's fine. But we looked for it the other day, you couldn't find it.
Was it this?
I don't know.
I have that.
You know, probably a big room.
Yeah, I know.
Running out of space. She's got me contained in one room.
There are two or three deeds of the property, it's not a simple lots, um, purchased by the trust.
Yeah, okay. All the ones we have would appears to be something, Bob can take a look at it, maybe he can.
Was it the same grantee in all the deeds?
I don't, but you're the attorney.
Well, yeah, they're all.
He bought a piece from Jim Kinnear quite a few years ago, who lived on Daniel's Road, um.
The trust did.
The trust. Well, Bruce Thompson's did, and then he deeded it over to the trust. I'll take that back, maybe the trust did buy it, as, and he was the trustee.
Is, is the property in question for this, for this project then? Which, um, it looks like there's multiple parcel references here, it's one of those parcels.
Four, three parcels.
It's, I'm right? I mean, the parcels aren't, we're not dealing in a case where we have multiple parcels on this project, are we? Are there more than one deed on the lots that we're looking at?
On, on, yes.
Oh, there are, okay.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, so lots one through four could be under this parcel.
There's a stone wall, I don't know if you remember on the sidewalk, there's a stone wall that runs through the property. And that was a dividing line.
That was dividing line on the, on the property, okay.
Well, one of, one of two dividing lines.
Well, the, the thing that, that I think we were questioning, and questioning whether the trust owned the land or not, is because I believe Marion Thompson's name is still on the listed as the owner of the property in the town's records.
Well, that, that might be true, but his mother passed away recently.
Yes.
And, uh.
So is it still in probate?
No, it's, it's been deeded over to, to Bruce and his sister.
Okay, okay.
Is that the evidence you were looking for?
Hmm?
That last day.
Right, I thought the other thing was the validity of the deed, where only Bruce had signed it as, as the trustee. And I thought you were questioning that his sister also had to sign it. But that's, the, the deed that, the deed that I presented in the packet to you this, this, this morning, shows that they have the authority.
Yep, they have the same one.
Singular on.
Yep.
And they did that because his, his sister usually goes to Florida in the winter, and they, they didn't wanna go chasing after it.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's a valid point, but it's, it's covered. But the issue really was that we've been at well grappling with is, you know, is it clear the trust who, you know, is here conveying the property? Because as near as we can tell, the trust, the only role the trust has is to convey the property. And the trust is working in conjunction with you to assist the developer in securing the right from us.
I'll clear that up. I'll put a package together and making that very clear.
'Cause that's, that's where we're not, you know, we've been confused and not sure is to. Because that's, that's where we're not, you know, we've been confused and not sure is to, you know, who really has the authority to convey the property?
Right.
Does somebody, does somebody here, some name?
Are these the three deeds? That one, that one, and that one?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, but the trust is only, the trust is only, the trust is only a grantee on one of those deeds.
Okay.
The other two, there are other people, the trust is not a grantee.
Right.
So the trust has no interest in two of these deeds, only one of them.
Only one of them.
So, uh, but like I said, I can put a packet together that'll clear that up. I, I misunderstood you, I thought you were questioning the validity of Bruce's signature.
No, that's easily established here for that document, but if...
That's the deed that goes into the trust, so if, if, if everything contained in the application is in that deed...
It's okay.
Then it's in that trust. I don't know anything about this application, I...
Yeah, no, no, that's what we're looking for. Now, now it sounds like...
That's the deed. Ignore the other two, because they're, the trust isn't a, isn't a party.
All right, well, that's... So the other two were more of a red herring?
I don't know why they're there.
Well, because there's three parcels. So this deed happens to cover something. The question we'll have to confirm is that it actually covers in entirety the lot that we're talking about. Because if that's the case...
Yes, that deed.
Right, that deed.
Yes.
That that deed is, is, controls the entire part.
Based on what I know, based on a small amount, I know, that's correct.
Then they can't convey the, uh, they, I mean, they couldn't convey the...
That brings us back to the, at our actual issue.
Yeah, all right, so do you know, John?
I'm sorry?
Do, do you have a sense, you know, of whether or not a single deed? That seems to be the conclusion here. A single deed represents that entire lot?
No.
It can't be the case?
No.
Okay, so then there must be other parties that would be required, these other deeds?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
I think this is also, this is a Judy, a question for Judy.
Like I said, I'll, I can quickly put together a package to show, to show you the, uh, the chain of title.
For the application, right?
No, he can act, the trust...
Of all three?
But no, the tru, well, the trust, the trust evidently can act, the trustees can act simply when there's only two trustees. If it's three or more, then a majority, according to this document. For just one trust, yeah. But for the other trusts, or whoever these other, the signs are, you know, that they, they would have to be involved. They're not parties to this, yeah. So that, that would seem to me to validate the ability to, to convey.
Yep, they're enough.
Agree?
Yes. I, I, I know I have the, the deeds in the office.
No, well, this, I, this looks, this looks accurate, and if, if we've gotten this, we have to go back to that original copy, I, but I wanna say, but you said the architecturals are in here, too?
Right. Maybe, it's, some through them, the...
My hair, I'll let you glance real quick, you can go forward. Well, um, because the absence of the deeds could invalidate a lot of this, make it difficult to do anything.
Okay, we have, we have, we have three deeds here...
Right.
That comprise of all that land.
Yes.
Okay, and it was all land that Bruce owned. And then this one here is the one... This is his only three acre parcel.
Matter of fact, what I can do is sketch it out to show you what deed owns what area.
Uh, that's not necessary.
I think I'd better, I think I'd better do that, because it is complicated.
Uh, yeah, no, I agree, I don't think it's necessary.
Here we are.
Okay. There's one.
I think they're all properly stamped by a registered architect, too.
Four twelve ten, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh...
Are you all signed?
Yeah, I think that's a, uh... I, I think the absence of the trust's ability to control the entire parcel is...
It's critical.
Well, yeah.
Of course.
It's like trying to sell a car without the keys, you know?
Right.
I don't think you want to do that or not have the title. I think that's a problem.
Well, the assessor, if you look at the assessor's map, the assessor's map is correct, that he, the trust owns, owns all the property.
Well, I, I don't know how, how the trust could only own all the property and there not be deeds for all of it.
Well, there are deeds.
Oh, that, that supersede these?
Exactly.
Oh, well, then it would have been helpful then.
Right, yeah.
So the trust acquired these other, the other property at a future date from when these deeds were conveyed?
Yeah, they were deeded to the trust.
They were deeded to the trust? Are these all, is it all the same family in there?
Yes, yeah. So it's, yeah, it's all the same family.
I see.
Stephanie Dejardins is Bruce's sister.
Yeah, yeah. So you're saying currently, though, there are, there's evidence to suggest these other portions of the parcel that were not covered by that deed have been deeded over to the trust, so that the trust...
Well, of that one deed, but I think all the deeds for all the property are there, except what was pointed out, the, the grantee is not the trust. And that's what I'll straighten out.
Okay, um, well, it gets more confusing, John.
Right. Okay. Saying we don't have anything else. Or should we go to...
Did we, did we ever read into the record? I guess we did from the last hearing. I wanna be sure we read all of John's letters into the record. Letter, did we read that letter into the, uh, we, we couldn't have? Because it came after the last hearing. I think we should read that letter into the record.
Right.
I think we should read, I think we should read Judy's letter into memo into the record as well. Okay.
All right, yeah, I wanna read. Very good.
Next, next one ahead, Ms. John's one. Subsequent to our hearing last month, in which we discussed securing an additional, you know, a final review?
Right.
Okay, you, you sent us a letter on the twenty-fourth expressing an opinion at that point in time.
And this has not been entered into the record.
Right.
So it's dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, for the Zonings Board of Appeals, thirty-nine Central Street, P.O. Block Six One, Six One Eight, Raleigh, Mass. Here's zoning board appeals member. After discussing the issue of hiring an additional technical review consultant with Bruce Tompkins, as discussed at the last meeting of the ZBA, we've decided not to accept the board's request. Please do not hire any additional technical review consultants or disperse any of our depositing funds without our prior approval. Very truly yours, John DeGulles.
Now, subsequent to receiving your letter and our discussion, in which we, we candidly indicated we would be, you know, happy to put out the bid, obtaining another, because we felt we wanted another review, and, and you feeling the party that we thought at the time Larry Graham, et cetera, would be appropriate, and you're not feeling comfortable with that, and then providing this to us, we, Chairman Don Thurston contacted Judy Pickett, Town Council, for an opinion about what, what rule we have, because we felt like we were in a catch twenty-two. We wanted to do the right thing legally, but we, and yet we felt we had the ability to do what we wanted to. Here, we wanna read your opinion, you have a copy of that?
Yeah, well, I don't have it with me, but I...
No, I mean, you, you haven't seen it, does John have a copy of it? Okay.
Oh, what, the September twenty-fourth letter?
No, no, that, no, we have a letter dated...
Oh, from, oh, from Pickett, oh, I see, yeah, okay.
This is to me, Don Thurston, Chairman of the Zonings Board of Appeals, from Judy Pickett, October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, Marion Way. I have reviewed the brief letter from John DeGulles regarding the hiring of a technical consultant for peer review. If the applicant has submitted plans for review, the Board of Appeals may use the peer review funds to undertake review. There is nothing in the Board of Appeals Comprehensible Permit Rules, Revision Two Thousand Ten, that prevents the board from using the fees unless the developer has filed an appeal with the Board of Selectment based on a claim that the consultant has a conflict of interest or does not possess the minimum qualifications. The same language is also set out in General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three G. The developer cannot control your access to the peer review consultant funds if the board needs a consultant to review submitted plans or engineering documents. So...
Sign.
So you're refusing to give us the money so that we can have the review done? So I am, at this point, going to close this hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I, uh, make a statement before you do that? I think in my letter of today, I explain why I disagree with hiring Graham at this late stage. Also, there will be a technical review that the, that I'm working with a conservation commission that's stated in, in today's letter, and you will get another technical review. But not from Graham. Graham has already done two reviews.
Well, that's true, but keep in mind, you, you do note in your letter that, that Graham and your opinion about the fact that the, the planning board elected to disperse their own funds for a review. I don't know that the boards have a different opinion, but that's the plan, the zoning board on that point, but that's the planning board's prerogative. Has nothing to do with the funds you provide us, nothing to do with the funds we have access to or...
No, I understand that. Except, i- in the beginning, I was for hiring Larry Graham.
We, we know that.
Right? And I was improperly accused of not having an arms-length relationship, that I was somehow was in cahoots.
Yeah, that's, that's your feeling that you were accused, you were not accused.
I was, I certainly, most certainly was.
No, you weren't.
Well, we certainly didn't need to imply that, because I, I did, I personally never felt that, I don't think, I can't speak the rest of the world, but I don't think they did, and I know...
Well, 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 if that's the case, why wasn't Graham hired from the beginning?
Because when we obtained our quotes and got all our reviews, frankly, and there's, the file contains their quote, it was a very inadequate representation of what they would do, what they had done, what was relevant from their past history, and outline of what the review would include, and their cost was higher. It was a one-page proposal, and, and as you know, Camet Associates provided the board with a very thorough detail of everything they would do. The board, the board wasn't predisposed anywhere, we worked with the information that was most thorough.
I, I know that, uh...
And, and in due deference to Larry Graham and Associates, I mean, the planning board's relationship with them, you know, has been long-term, and we recognize that.
Matter of fact, Cliff, at the first public hearing, Cliff Pierce was there, and he recommended hiring Graham.
Sure.
And I agreed with that. And then when the board, uh, this board decided to hire Camet, I voiced strong objections, but to no avail.
Well, as, as I say, it was on the basis of the information we had. It, it wasn't, it wasn't because we're disposed not to work with you or Larry, because as you, as you now know, in, in review, and in the course of this process for the last three years, and based upon the review that Larry Graham did for the planning board, um, we, we are at least content with utilizing him, and, and you're now suggesting that that's redundant, um, why don't you get, get a third party?
Which, which we're working on with the conservation commission, that they, that, uh, I've agreed with them verbally to that we're gonna go with Horsley and Witten. I'm finishing up, uh, two very lengthy stormwater pollution, uh, plans of about over a hundred pages. It seems like I'm drowning in paperwork. But I'll have those done the first of the week, and, uh, we're, we're gonna hire Horsley and Witten, and when that report comes in, we'll certainly give you a copy. If you're not satisfied with it, then we can discuss it at that time, but I think they do a very thorough job from the work I've seen and from the proposal they submitted. I think, did I send you a copy of their proposal, by the way?
No, I don't think we ever sent it, no.
No.
No. So anyways, uh...
So you will be getting a third, a third, uh, technical review.
When's your expectation for that?
I'm sorry?
When do you think that would be done, John?
Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna, like I said, I planned to button it up the first of the week, and, um, they may take a couple weeks, maybe a little more, to review it, and we should have an answer certainly by the end of next month.
Okay. Sure.
I hear a motion to close this hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I have a letter for continuance here somewhere.
I told you several, three, four months ago, that there'll be no more continuances, and we've already gone, had two continuances. So...
You wanna, you want a motion for that?
Yes.
I move that we close the public hearing as of this date.
Well, you're seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. This hearing is closed. I will be in touch with, uh, Edie, see what we go for.
Ed, and Judy, I think, too.
Okay? All right.
So do you want a copy of that report from Horsley and Witten, then?
When it comes.
Okay.
All right. So, anything else coming from the board tonight?
Uh, yes.
These ladies over here.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
I hope yours is a lot simpler.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, uh... It is simple, and it's not simple.
What do we got? We've got an informal hearing.
Yes.
Uh, this is an informal discussion.
Okay.
This, uh, young lady you're hearing?
Yes.
She wants to file an application to the zoning board, but wants some feedback as to whether she can actually do what she wants to do. And a lot, it's thirty-three Ellsworth Road, and the land has been in the family since the sixties, and I'd like to build a small, single-family home for my family to live in. My great-grandparents are the original owners. And Lot Thirty-three, uh, Ellsworth Road, is across from the... Okay. Okay, unfortunately, we don't have a full map to show...
Is this the part coming in off of Leslie Roadway down in the narrow dirt road?
Okay, this driveway right here is, uh, it's the... Okay. I assume.
Do you, do you have any better map?
Didn't you give us that book?
It has a hundred and fifty-foot frontage, and goes back a hundred and fifty feet. It's got twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. It's an undersized lot.
Yeah.
Is that, uh?
But it's.
Seven, you know, map list?
Uh, map six.
Six?
Oh, is that six? I think that's six.
Okay.
No, 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 you, you're not, you're not in the right place, you're not in the right place.
Oh, this is Ashley Lane, right here.
No, 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 it's down, it's down.
Okay, and then it's right here, I mean, I live on Leslie Road, so I know where this is.
Yeah, but it's down Wilson Pond, are you down Wilson Pond?
You're going down that path.
It's down Wilson Pond.
That's why I asked you if it was off of Leslie Road.
No.
Yes, yes, it's off of Leslie.
Okay, so are you saying no, you're saying?
Well, no, it goes across from Wilson Pond to Wellesley, Beth to Leslie. It goes all the way across.
Well, you can go in from the other end.
Yeah, you could go in.
Where the dirt road is. That's what I thought.
I was gonna ask you.
There's a gate.
There's a gate there, there's a chain gate.
It's a chain gate, yeah.
So, that's off of Leslie Road, not Wilson Pond.
And that's Mulcahy's driveway.
And this is, this is Wilson Pond over here.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, then, she's got it right here. It's this, whoops, my pen. It's this lot right here.
Jesus, I lost the one you gave me.
It's that lot right there.
And that's coming off of?
It is Leslie Road right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the cemetery.
Yeah.
Right, okay, now, the history of all these is...
Yeah, I came in.
It's, it's wet, it's, it is wet up in here.
Is it really?
Wet here, I don't know.
Yeah, there was, I think there was wet, the lot next to mine, I believe. I remember visiting the conservation, he said mine wasn't, but the, I think either one or two next to it were wet. Maybe the second one over.
Okay.
Can't focus on that.
Now, it's that lot right there.
Yeah, okay.
That's Mulcahy right there.
Yeah, all right. Is, is Mulcahy the last property, do you know them?
Yes.
Mulcahy's thirty-eight.
They're thirty-eight, they're the ones up on the right in that last house up there?
The last house, yes, I'm directly adjacent to that.
Okay. There's somebody, who's up there high, uh, behind you?
That's Leslie Terrace.
That's Leslie Terrace.
That's Leslie Terrace up there.
Yeah, this is Leslie Terrace. It doesn't exist.
It's just a, it's a paper roof.
It's a paper roof, there are accesses.
There's accesses down here somewhere, off Ellsworth.
There's accesses right there.
Yeah.
Right there. There's been a lot of problems up there with lots and so forth and whatnot.
Well, you know the history of those lots, it's a tiny little lot.
This has been, there's no water up there.
There is no water?
No.
It's, it's, it's accesses. The only access you have is from, is from, uh, Wilson Pond.
Wilson Pond, yes.
Yeah, off Ellsworth, yeah.
Okay. Uh, and it, is the gate beyond your property?
Yes.
Must just be beyond.
It's, yeah, literally like a foot.
I, cause I, to be honest with you, I live on Newbury, so I drove up there, cause I wanted to see the lot.
Right.
And we have friends that live on both sides of Ellsworth, right, right in there. And I, I drove all the way up in the back, and it wasn't clear to me where your lot really was, cause the gate was clear.
Yes, exactly.
And it's a chain gate, at this point, that's all along.
Yeah, exactly, with two rods at the end.
Right. Right.
What number is it, though, you got it?
It's thirty-three. Lot thirty-three.
What's the map in parcels, six thirty, six?
Six thirty-three, right next to it. You've got Lot thirty.
I would assume your intent would be to access off of Ellsworth.
It's way down there.
Cause that's a much better road than coming up off Leslie.
Which one is, which one is Mulcahy?
That's more like a cart path.
Which, which number?
Yeah, exactly.
One of the ones in Mulcahy or this one?
Yeah, so it is, it's pretty, yeah, it goes, I think, half a foot over the gate is where the stakes are.
It says that this one is Mulcahy, and it's right here. I think that's it.
So, that's the third one down from the block, coming in on the left?
Yeah, must be, yes, that's what the number's saying.
Right, right, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Right, okay. It's one of the biggest lots there.
Yeah, yeah, I see that now.
And do you have it staked, Aaron, is it staked now? It is staked?
Yes.
The, the, so the whole lot, all corners?
Yeah.
You made these books, so you should have.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I think I did that one.
We allowed Mulcahy to, uh, to build there because we felt that this part of the road was, was, uh, could take one more, could take one house uh, because of the driveway situation. The problem is that what's created here is that when Mr. Eris built his house way up in back here, now, I'm going back, I'm going back fifty years. Okay? The planning board allowed him to use Ellsworth Road as his driveway, because he had no frontage. And they allowed him to use that as his frontage and driveway. So, he developed it, prior to that, it was nothing but a cart path. And he opened it up and so forth and whatnot.
Still only one tile wide.
It's still only one tile wide.
Yeah.
So.
Was that the, the, the houses that are behind my lot? Is that the house you're talking about?
No.
Um.
No, I'm talking about Mulcahy, who's across the street.
Oh, across the street, okay.
Across the street. So, we allowed him to use that for his driveway to get in, but people started using it. And, so the town put a, I think they crossed it so that they, they couldn't go down here. Cause this part of the road, uh, cannot be widened. Because you have Popey Park, which is a historic site.
Okay.
On one side, and you have the cemetery on the other side. So, that road cannot be widened. So, it's, the town didn't want people using this road, so that's why they gated it off, so they could go through. They could go through. And they gated it off just beyond Mulcahy, so Mulcahy could go up this way. I don't know how much wider it is down here.
Not much.
Not much.
It's not, it's not two cars wide, certainly, it's, it's easily one car, cause one car comes and goes up it.
And how, how's, how's the part of Ellsworth Road?
It's gravel.
It's gravel.
Yeah, but it's very passable.
Very passable. The, uh, I don't know, I do believe that this whole road issue is in litigation. And I don't know what part of the road is in litigation. What's very interesting is that this road is Meeting House Lane. It's not Ellsworth Road.
Right, cause I've learned.
Okay.
It's very confusing.
That is Meeting House, that is Meeting House Lane. Uh, but what's interesting is that your deed says Ellsworth Road. Mulcahy's deed says Meeting House Lane. And all the properties on, Mulcahy's site says Meeting House Lane, and all the properties on the other side says Ellsworth Road.
That's even more interesting.
Same road.
Cause Ellsworth Road comes in off by Ashley.
Right, comes all, right, comes off of, Ellsworth Road actually comes off of,
What is that way over?
Leslie, Leslie Road way down where Ashley Terrace is. And it came all the way back up and up to Meeting House Lane.
Right, and stopped there.
And that's where it stopped. Cause that was the drive, that was, this was the main entrance to Ellsworth Farm. No, I'm talking ancient history.
That road comes right by, by the pond, Wilson Pond.
Right.
Right. But it does, it doesn't cross over, it's no longer crosses over Wilson Pond. Meeting House.
It does, well, it's water, I, I used to go flying through there with my four-wheeler.
Yeah, but you, but here, but, but, but these lots here, all Wilson Pond is.
They moved the road, actually, when they built Wilson Pond.
They had to, yeah.
So, to, to answer your, to answer your question, you may have a buildable lot. It's an underside, it's according to present bylaws, you're in, the present bylaws require a hundred and fifty-foot frontage and sixty thousand square feet of land. You only have twenty-two thousand five hundred. However, state statute says a buildable lot, if it was in existence prior to zoning, can be built on if it contains fifty foot of frontage and five thousand square feet of land. I believe your lot is probably grandfathered. Because I believe this lot existed prior to nineteen sixty.
I, yeah, I believe so.
Okay. You would have to get, you would have to put in a well, and you have to have a septic tank available.
Okay.
Before you can get a build.
And the problem there is getting the distance between them.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And the distance to the boundary lines.
So, does she need permission to use that driveway?
Hmm? What?
Does she need permission to use that driveway going in?
She wouldn't use it from the street.
She can come in from the other end?
She would just come in from Ellsworth.
She would come in from Ell, from.
Right off of Wilson Pond, yeah. That's the least of the issues here, I, I think, you know, squeezing all this stuff in that tiny little lot and putting a house in there. How big a house you, you say, eight rooms, four bedrooms?
Well, that was, you know, the first one I did many years ago, after learning all this stuff along the way, I realized it can't be that big. So, I didn't wanna go forward and start doing all this stuff if it was not a possibility at all. So, I've got a lot of different stories. So, it would definitely be a smaller house than that, three people living there.
How, how big was that house, how big a footprint was it, do you know?
That was the square footage, or?
Yeah.
Um, no, basically, it was just a rough, rough idea, I wanna say twenty-two hundred square feet.
Yeah.
It's not that big, right, yeah.
Yeah, but then, but like you say, you only have a hundred and fifty feet across, and you've got probably a fifty by forty.
You got a problem with?
How many bedroom are you gonna have, like, you're planning on?
Thirty by thirty?
Say, three, you might have to cut it down to two, because it's gonna be the size of your leachant field and your tanker, that's gonna take up a lot of your property.
Right.
Right.
Cause it all depends where they're gonna say that's gotta go.
The other, the other thing is, uh, I say you may have a buildable lot, because it's grandfathered. However, you have to comply with the present zoning.
Okay.
And present zoning is fifty foot setback from the street, and fifteen feet from, uh,
Sidewalk lines.
Sidewalk lines.
And twenty feet to the back.
So, that means you're, you're working inside a smaller area within the lot.
Yes. Okay, um, so, it may be a buildable lot, but I would have to do the well and the septic, have all that detailed.
You have a perk test, you have a perk, you get a contractor, he goes in and he digs, and they find out if.
Right, if the water's.
If it will be accept a septic system, that's your first thing you wanna do.
Okay.
Well, she also wants to know, there's got to be a certain distance between the well and the septic system.
And well, right, right.
You can put that right on the edge of the road, the well can be on the edge of the road.
That's where the well can be dumped anyway, right?
Yeah, it can be ten, I think it's ten feet away from it.
Ten feet away from?
A little more. It's more than that.
The thing is, they can. I have no idea what it costs to put in a well.
Right.
It may be deep well.
Nine thousand.
Yeah, it could.
Six to eight thousand.
Yeah, exactly. For a deep well.
But you wanna, first, you wanna see if it'll perk?
If it perks.
Doesn't perk?
Yes, no, anyways, yeah, because they did do the proposed of where the well would go, with the proper feet and distance with the septic, it's just pending the soil testing and, like you said. But it seems, from what they drew up, it seems like it, they said there was enough room to put all that, and still have with the current guidelines, through what they did here.
Okay, well, that's, then you've got more information than perhaps we realized, which is good. But you would, we would need to have documentation about the age of the lot, because, yeah. In order for the board to give you a go-ahead, given the fact that it's grandfathered, we need to know, we need to know this.
So, what year would, how far would you have to go back to maintain the grandfather law?
Before nineteen sixty.
Before nineteen sixty, okay. After that, I'm out of luck, right?
From grandfather, yeah.
Right, right.
I have no shot, no chance, so.
Make a tennis court.
Pack it up and, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Do a tennis court.
Do a campfire girls or something like that.
She ain't the brother, you use a tent.
Yeah, right.
So, we have to keep.
This is temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's probably an impossibility, I suppose, you can begin to acquire lots if, if you really. But my suspicion is, is you have a lot, so you're just trying to use something you got. As opposed to chasing down, acquiring, you could acquire anywhere if you were interested in acquiring.
The other, does the building inspector say there can be a buildable lot?
Building inspectors already told you can't do it.
He's told me so many different stories, every time I came back, I got a different one. One day, he issued me a special permit, said, yeah, fill this out. Next time I went back, he acted like he never seen me before, and said, no way, not, I'm not supposed to give you anything, away. Like, I got a different story every time I went. Then I heard it was in litigation, I can't do anything. I heard it was wet. Then I went to the conservation, that was fine, um, then the road came up, it was too narrow. I just, every time I went, I got a different story, so I said, let me just stop back here.
Uh, I will, I will say this. The town will not maintain that road.
I spoke with Scott at the DPW, and he said they do maintain it, he said they plow it, they grade it. He said the town fully maintains it, cause that was an issue at one point, so when I spoke to him.
Really?
They were accepting.
He agreed that it was.
The weather's field.
Yeah, cause you're, you're paying, they're accepting the, the people's taxes.
They're accepting state, they're also accepting state, uh, support.
This is state money, so.
Yeah, cause we ran into that when we were going across.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I think they're going away from their rule encouraged. Should be.
So, those are two key things first.
Hmm?
Two key things for her first, make sure the deed is, um, the property's prior to nineteen sixty, and then the perk test.
So, how would it be?
If those are green lights, you can go forward. If those are green lights, then you can go forward.
Okay.
Somewhere.
Well, the town, the property is, is gone, is in your name now?
The property is in my father's name.
Fa- in your father's name?
Yes.
And it belonged to his parents beforehand?
Yeah, and then it belonged to her parents, my great grandparents. And I believe before that it wasn't in our family, before that.
From that, that same size one, I think, same hotlines.
That's probably before nineteen sixty.
Hmm.
Wow.
Yeah, many, many years.
Uh.
When they new years ago, go camping there or what? Nothing?
Got nice trees, all right.
Have all the last names prior visit all goulded or different?
Um, me, my father, my grandmother, before her, it was Harris.
Harris prior to.
Yes. That's my great grandmother, um.
And how, 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 what's, what's the pitch of the land, does it go up?
It does go up, yes, it's definitely not flat.
Mm.
It's not a huge pitch.
Yeah.
Mm.
But it definitely is.
So you may have to dig into, uh, build into the.
Where, where is there?
Right.
The slope?
Right.
You can go walk over soon.
Hopefully it's no ledge.
No.
No, there was a random foundation, a couple lots to the left of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
It was a.
Really?
Yeah.
As you face it, you mean to the left?
Yeah, if you're looking at the lot, I believe two lots down. Was it, old foundation.
Right, you put a foundation in, in a filthy little water.
Um, yeah, probably, yeah, I think you're right, if you remember.
Right, that, that, I know that, I know that, I know that, uh.
So that must be the one that's under lock.
You're there, next door, next one, and the next one, which is on the fork of the road, end of the road.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the real wet one.
That's at the bend.
Right, that.
Yeah, but that's lower than this, that is lower than yours. Yeah, you're actually, if it is a bit of a high point, although the property back on Leslie Terrace, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That house is dramatic, that's a.
Yeah, it's really high.
It's the Murphy's.
He loves my land.
Is that Murphy Ken building?
Is that who that is?
Ken.
The Murphy Ken. So, if it perks and you can get a well in there. Uh. Uh, what's the litigation thing about? Is that gonna hold her up or anything?
I, I don't know, I don't know.
I'd find out about what that is before I spend any money on anything, wouldn't you?
Litigation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, as they say, I don't know what's being litigated. Uh, whether it's.
Is it the naming?
It's.
You know, what one side?
I don't know it's to do with this lot here or this lot here.
Oh, remember, we had this lot down here.
Right.
Remember, I'll, I'll tell you why, I bet you why it's litigation, because we discovered, talk about rowly crazy history, we discovered that. Meeting House Hill had been an accepted road. Going back about seventeen eighty, but then around eighteen ten, the town said, now we're not gonna go that far anymore. So they released a part, there's documents, they released a part of the lot, a part of this road where they gave it up, back up to that junction point. And and we had a woman who has a piece of property, who has about literally less than this table frontage on what is now Cindy Lane.
Yeah, they'll say you're blocking it, it's a new property.
And the only place she actually has some frontage is on Meeting House Hill, but it's not an accepted road. And she had an attorney who did an enormous amount of research.
Yeah.
And then, and then some historical knowledgeable people, Don and and Bob Mary stumbled through some documents and looked at some wording closely. And we were all trying to figure where did the town give it up, up here or down here, and they gave it up, up here, and all of a sudden her lot had nothing. It had no frontage anywhere. And she could buy frontage off Cindy Lane from the developer, but it would be like me selling you that bottle of water for two hundred bucks.
Right.
You know, and she said, well, I'm not doing that. So that's probably what she's litigating, if that's, if that's the litigation you're talking about.
Hey, 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 Lisa, I think they're trying to prove that this was, this was approved.
Right, an approved road, and never was not approved.
Right.
Yeah, cause Judith said to me that it was a property owner along Meeting House Road that was in litigation. She said it was a different sized lot.
Yeah.
With different, different issues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a different location too.
Yeah, exactly.
Was it?
That's why.
Totally different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, meet along Meeting House Road, so that's the other side.
If 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 they were to win that, I could only see that benefiting you, not working against you. Because if they were to win and they got this accepted, which I don't think they will, cause when you, when you look at what the town.
It's a whole different section.
It it's, you know, it's it's eighteen, it's vintage eighteen fifteen, eighteen twenty town meeting notes. In which it's clear, if you look at a particular word, that it says northwesterly instead of southwesterly, you have to look at it closely, but that's the distinction.
Right.
Or eastward.
Eastward, not westward.
Eastward. So it's, it's, it was intriguing to find that there were good documentation, that's two hundred years old.
Most ancient thing lasts that long.
Yeah, no.
Um.
But maybe two hundred years from now, people will be looking at what we're doing tonight.
So, uh. You have some issues that you're gonna have to.
Okay, so I have a chance if I'm in before the sixties, after the sixties. You don't wanna see my face again.
Right.
Not this lot anyways, it's.
It's a lot.
No.
You can come in, but we can't give you a different answer.
No, because if she's got fifty foot frontage and five thousand square feet.
I got plenty of that.
Yeah, yeah, and uh, I mean, if she, if uh.
But that's only if she exists before zoning. Is that right?
Hmm?
That's only if she exists before zoning, but it sounds like the lot exists way back before.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, way back.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you're, I I I think you're.
They they go, they go back into the twenties, I'm sure.
So that's probably, you're probably actually safe on that count.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be concerned too much about that, I'm sure you can trace that right back and prove that that was a lot before nineteen sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you probably got a plan that has a date on it that's recorded, somebody's deed says as shown on this plan, dated such and such record, you can probably find that in five minutes.
Somewhere. Yeah.
Okay.
So.
But that's probably the easy part.
Okay, so then the perk testing and all that, the designs.
So if you, if you get to the point where it perks and you can get a well in there. And you go to the building inspector and he does not give you a building permit.
I don't think he will.
Then you'll have to come to us.
Thank you.
Then come back to you.
Formally.
I think he's petrified to give a permit. He sees my face, he's like, no. I said, but I haven't said anything yet, no, I can't do it.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, we won't.
So.
Does anything bad?
I mean, I mean, actually. I have often told inform formally that this is all in litigation and I don't know how much of it is. I don't know whether this part of the road is in litigation or what, but uh.
How do I find out, is there any way? To get more detail on that?
Any thoughts? How would you find out, a pending suit or something?
Is that public?
You think of it?
Well, yeah, you can go to the, go to the clerk's office and say more. But if you don't know what parties, then I'll, you gotta have a name.
Right.
In town.
Oh, have a name.
My Judith might know. She must. Okay.
I mean, it gets, it gets kinda crazy, cause they use the deed to the center of roads. So if somebody's saying, my deed goes to the center of this road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
And I think we should find out, because on last year sometime, somebody had come informally, like Erin.
Then.
Who wanted on Meeting House Road to split up a, their property, they had like two acres or something like that. And they wanted to see if they could um subdivide and build on that other lot. Remember that one? Was that a couple of years ago, last year or two years ago?
Yeah, I think. Right.
Yeah.
Right. Now somebody wanna combine two lots.
Was it combining two lots or splitting one lot?
I don't know, it's combining.
Combining?
To make a buildable lot.
Right.
I don't know what happened though, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember either, I don't even remember hearing about it.
I thought they were saying they couldn't build on that.
Mm-hmm.
That road because there's no frontage.
Right.
Boy, I'm going back.
Maybe this is another time, another case, I don't know.
Well, you've got some options, I mean.
I mean, so. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Have we answered your questions?
Yeah. If you have anything else to add?
Good luck with Erin.
Thank you. Say a little bit better, at least I got some direction and not goodbye, then come back.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, no, no, I think, I think, I think we can get to a point where we're gonna grant a agreement to do it.
So the lot is.
I think, I mean, you're gonna have to work out whether or not you can put all this stuff you need to get on that lot.
Right.
And I don't think, I don't think it's really an issue for us, I think it's more like. You need to feel comfortable, cause you can, you go to town and help say no, you'll come to us and we'll review the same information, come up with the same conclusion, say, okay. You'll protect your grandfather, go for it, but it'll be up to you to know that it's worth whatever money you're spending, go for it.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's why I didn't wanna do all the investing and then say, why are you even here, this is no way, you know, and then I already invested all that time. For no reason, that's why I go get a little further.
All right.
There's a May, I heard a May. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give this back to you.
Okay, okay.
There's no pointless keepers.
No. Not till we decide.
Well. So, uh, you've, uh. You filled that out pretty well, pretty much what you had on, to come before our board, so. But you do have to good sign offs and so forth.
Yes.
If you decide, if you decide to come.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You're welcome.
You too.
Okay, do I hear most of you make a motion on the return?
Good job.
Okay.
Did somebody make a?
I did.
Second.
There we go.
Mostly main second, all favor.
I'm going anywhere.